Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco. Commissioner Tamiyan.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Riley. Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here. Item number three additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. Let me see, we have none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move the approval of the agenda as presented. Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number five minutes of previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the minutes of the August 21st Commission meeting and the September 4th Standing Committee meetings be approved and filed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number six, proclamations. There's no proclamations. Item numbers seven, consent agenda. Items A through K.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of items A, 7A through 7K of the consent agenda.
Support.
Any discussion on any of these items in the consent agenda? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Moving on. Reports of standing and special committees. I'm going to start with Mr. Greatop.
Mr. Greatop will take a pass tonight, sir.
Carl.
Not tonight.
Howard.
I'm taking a pass too.
Okay. Just a little quick update here. I know a lot of you have been reading about the M-29 discussions that the county's been involved in here in the city of St. Clair. Very early in the process, the first meeting that we had the other day was to really introduce a survey regarding the road. Ironically, I went in and I talked to Dave Struck yesterday, and they've had over 364, 369 respondents. That's as of yesterday. So getting a tremendous amount of participation on that survey. The county is helping to just facilitate. At the end of the day, the city of St. Clair, the city council will make the decisions regarding that. But we felt that the county would be perhaps the best facilitator of that because of all the connections with the MDOT, connections with the state legislature, the federal. We have a lobbying firm, you know, just kind of a good clearinghouse. And Dave Struck was here the other night along with Lindsey Wallace and did a really good job. It's going to take a lot of meetings, and there's a lot in play. You may have read recently, here in the city of St. Clair has a substantial set aside from the Community Foundation, which is going to produce a lot of money for a long time to be spent here in St. Clair. So I think you're going to see the Community Foundation along with the county and the city continue to work on some of these different items. That's about it for me. I'm going to move on to item number nine, citizens wishing to address the board. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move on to unfinished business. No unfinished business. Item number 11, new business. If you see us going through these things rather quickly, our structure for anybody that's never been to a county board meeting, our full board meetings are always the very first Thursday of the month. That's where we spend a lot of time talking about the different committee meetings, I'm sorry. And then we pass this information on to the full board meeting. So it's a little different than perhaps some of the city government's things. So if you see these things happening quick, they've been discussed previous. So item number 11, the new business, the approval of county dispersments.
Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the county dispersments for August 2014 in the amount of $26,94,188.52.
Second.
Discussion on any of these. Roll call.
Commissioner Tamiyan.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item number B, the mass notification software and overview.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the contract with Everbridge for a mass notification system in the amount of $41,400 for a one-year term with four optional renewals.
Support.
Discussion on any of this.
Just a comment for, you know, we had a special meeting on that, a workshop, plus discussed this at our meeting, and this is going to be a fantastic way of getting communications out to our citizens if there's a need to.
Okay. Yeah, I know they've had some of the reverse 911 things over the time. There's been, you know, I've been on the board 10 years, as you're aware, and there's been different notification systems put in place throughout a different time, but so comes technology, so comes changes to this. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item number C, the survey and remonumentation peer group appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we establish a survey and remonumentation peer group effective September 1st this year and to appoint the following individuals. Carolyn Hunter, David Little, Tim Eddy, Robert Arnold, Mike Russell, Chuck Coob, Jim Gorniak, and Richard Newt.
Second.
Discussion on any of this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number D, the Anchor Bay Schools law enforcement contract.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the agreement between the St. Clair County Sheriff's Office and the Anchor Bay School District for a police liaison officer for a term of 9/114 through 8/3117 in the amount of $180,149.
Support.
Discussion on any of this. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item number E, the agreement with Entrado for the 911 telephone system.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the agreement with Entrado for the Viper and Power 911 system for central dispatch in the amount of $125,018.40 and an annual maintenance payment of $40,800.
Support.
I've got our dispatch director too. You just want to give us a little bit of a background on this, if you don't mind? Trying to buy some time for Steve Samasco too. He's on his way.
What brought this project down is their current system was made by a company called Plant City Mount. It is end of life. There'll be no more support for it from March 2015. So we went out and set out bids looking for replacement equipment. Two of the main companies are the Entrado system and a system called Plant, excuse me, the Cityion. In the end, the best bid we got and the best equipment we got was through Entrado Viper. It will be a next-generation 911 compliant system. It will be capable of receiving text 911, and in the future, when they come out, they'll be able to text a video, excuse me, video to 911 and pitches 911. So it's truly a state-of-the-art system that's coming in and will be with us for quite a few years.
Any other questions?
What do you say, quite a few years, Tim? I mean, are you talking five or 10 or 20 or?
The average on these software 911 systems, they're about seven years.
About seven? Okay. Thank you.
I've got a couple unrelated, actually, questions, but Lapeer County, are we all set with Lapeer County now in the backup capacity and vice versa, St. Clair County being the backup for 911?
They've received all of our 911 lines, so they're just going to put in a couple switches and make them call every AT&T residential center, and everything goes straight to them.
When we're doing different changes to the software, do we, do you talk to Lapeer County, I guess essentially, as far as making sure that the compatibility between, you know, what we're putting in and what they're putting in, that those capabilities exist, or are we just, or do we just have a basic backup role, I'm assuming, with them in case of?
The phone system itself makes no difference, sir. It's where the 911 lines are routed through the trunk switches to the AT&T's 911 network. So when they reroute it, when we flip the switches, they'll go to any center that is 911 capable. We flip the switches, they'll get it. There's no difference in the equipment's parts. They're having a different system.
Yeah, okay. Okay, very good. One other thing on the 911 plan, we talked at the beginning of the year as far as the rewrite on the plan. Where are we at in that process?
I have submitted that plan, sir. Waiting for review back on it.
Okay. Any other questions for Tim at all?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamiyan.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item number F, the front of court Parks and Rec Manning table changes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request to convert the work program supervisor project specialist position to a project specialist in the front of the court manning table and to add two part-time ranger positions to the Parks and Recreation Manning table.
Support.
Discussion on any of this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number G, the 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Award.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the fiscal year 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program award in the amount of $11,729.
Support.
Discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. I want to take about a five-minute break here. I'm going to respectfully wait for Commissioner Samasco, seeing he was the one that probably initiated some of the discussion regarding the refunding of the Grand River property. He said he was going to be 10 minutes late. He's a little bit later than that, so if he's not here in five minutes, then we will move forward. Fair enough?
Mr. Chair, I would move a five-minute break.
Support.
I'm fine with that, but we have some other items. Could we skip over it and see if he?
You want to do, yeah, let's do that. We can do that. If you guys are fine with that, I don't think, Gary, that's nothing. Yeah, okay.
As the chair, you have the.
Yeah, you know what? We'll come back to that then. Perfect. Let's go to item number I, the maintenance agreement for the Applied Imaging Library.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the maintenance agreement for Applied Imaging for the library cockers for a term of five years in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Second.
Discussion on this. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Let's go on to the Administrator's report.
I've got a lot to cover, so I'm sure I can bill in.
Talk slow.
Are you a good dancer? You remember at a meeting a couple of months ago, we met with some folks from the NRCS regarding the hiring of a farm bill technician, and the costs were going to be split between a grant, a federal grant for $130,000, a $5,000 contribution from Macomb County, and $5,000 contribution from St. Clair County. Macomb County approved their $5,000 expenditure last week. The NRCS, the federal government, approved their grant for $130,000. The local office is just awaiting receipt of that grant agreement, and they expect to begin filling that position yet this year. We will be billed for our $5,000 before the end of the year. So they'll be reporting back on who they have hired, as well as progress that they're making and what their intentions are for the program. So we'll make sure they come back to you soon. There's been a lot going on regarding the Supreme Court decision, the Cunningham decision that we've talked a little bit about during some of our budget talks, and we've certainly covered during the Hart and Hennings as well. You may recall that this was a decision by the State Supreme Court in June of this year that restricts the fees and a portion of the fines that can be charged by the courts in certain cases. It was estimated to have an adverse impact on the county court system revenue-wise of about, I think it was about $450,000. The Michigan Association of Counties has been working on a legislative solution. Our Circuit Court Administrator testified in front of the House Judicial Committee last week, providing them with information on how this could potentially impact St. Clair County. Kerry Hefting spent some time on the phone this week with Representative Lowers and some of his staff people, going into detail again on the potential impact to us here in St. Clair County and what we have felt so far this year in loss revenue. We did receive notice this afternoon that the MAC proposed legislation has been approved by the House, so it's on its way to the Senate, and hopefully it will solve many of the issues. It is, I believe, only about a 24, 27-month solution. There is a sunset on this law as it, or the bill as it's currently written. If that sunset remains, then that will give the state an opportunity to try and come up with this long-term funding solution for the court systems. We'll certainly be tracking that, as well as our lobbyists, and we'll let you know how it progresses through the Senate and when the governor signs it.
Can we ask some questions regarding that issue?
Sure. I was at a Michigan Association of Counties meeting, and they were talking about the Cunningham decision, and one of the things that surprised me was that the ACLU had been involved with this, and part of the concern was that certain costs were being levied against, I guess they're not defendants, I don't know what you call them, once they're convicted, but in any event, if some of them are inigent and if they couldn't pay the fines, some counties were putting those individuals in jail. And so there were some concerns by the ACLU about that, but most of the other counties are not engaging in that practice, as I'm sure we wouldn't, because putting a person into jail who's uncollectible is just going to run our budget up even further. And I just thought that was another interesting aspect of that issue.
My understanding, Kerry, correct me if I'm wrong on that, aren't we talking somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars in type of hit to St. Clair County on this?
Annually, we collect about $900,000 or more.
$900,000, okay.
But as I understood it, what the ruling was is that you couldn't levy fees that were not defined by statute, and a lot of the fees that we're already levying are statutory fees, so we wouldn't necessarily lose all of the fees that we can levy.
Do you know the number on what potential, I know you crunched the numbers on all that stuff, what would be a potential loss?
The two court administrators asked me that it would be about a half million, but that's what we actually, the lack, not what was actually assessed. There was a lot of money out there that's been assessed that does not yet be collected, so an impact, if ever, we'd be much better.
Okay, thank you.
We sent a couple articles out on that, if you guys got it. Steve, I read both the articles that you sent out, and one of the points that you had brought up earlier, and I'm questioning now with the state's House bill, there was some concern that if the state put this in place, that they would end up taking a piece of that action. Has anybody read that House bill yet? Do we know, is it all going to come to the counties, or is the state going to dip into it?
I don't think we're going to know until they actually pass something, but my initial suggestion was, and Gary, I never asked you about it, why couldn't we adopt the local ordinance, not unlike the Motor Carrier Safety Act, you know, the sheriff and forces that we write in the city, a county ticket? Can't we adopt some of the penal code provisions for some of the general penal code-type crimes and then actually make it a, because at pretrial, what you could do is you could charge it under state law, go to pretrial, and then if you're going to plead it, plead it under, amend it to a county violation, and then take the fine structure to the county fine. Because one of the issues, if you codify state law, is that if there were appeals and things, it might end up costing you money, but we could actually manage that through the prosecutor's office on how they eventually take the plea and how we assess those fines. I don't know if that was ever discussed, but.
We'd have to look at it, but I don't, generally, the county doesn't codify those criminal offenses because it's done by cities, if it's in their jurisdiction. If not, it's under state law. And, but we could look at that.
What happens to, like our Motor Vehicle Carrier Act, don't we get the fines? Doesn't that stay more in the county or?
No, I think pretty much the state police, or the state gets all of that. We used to get some of it, the road commission did, when they enforced it. So they, the state can allocate, just like for road plowing and salting and things, the road commission gets money to do that in a state highway. And the weight enforcement stuff was being done by the road commission for a while. They got out of it, but while they were doing it, they got money for it from the state. Now that the state police are doing it, they keep all of it.
You're obviously under state law, then, probably.
Yeah. However, the, this board passed some ordinances restricting weight on county roads so as to not damage those roads, and those are enforced by the county sheriff's department.
Where'd those fines go?
County.
That's, I guess that's the piece I, talking to Jerry, the motor carrier guy, that's his impression was that was where.
Yeah, we'll look at it, yeah, because it's.
Because my fear is like everybody else, if it goes to land saying, we're going to wait to get it back, good luck.
Yeah. You'd be waiting a long time.
Straddle cell reimbursement, you know, they want some money to keep them pretty affordable. You need to send us a memo at the end of the year saying, gee, we don't have the money. That's what we get.
That happened more than once.
It happened a lot.
But my understanding from the Michigan Association of Counties lobbyists, that they felt that those bills are going to move along and be approved by November, so.
They're going to give us an emergency status or something with a sunset provision within a short period of time so they can reassess it? I guess that's what they're looking at.
It's a pretty big issue for the whole state, if you think about how much money could be lost.
As the bill has currently been passed by the House, it does allow for those funds to come back to the county. However, any of the additional fees that are charged against someone who's been convicted of a crime, we do have to report all of those in a great amount of detail to the state every year. So where that's going to lead, don't really know. But that is certainly a new requirement on this piece of legislation, is the detailed reporting and what we do assess. So we'll keep watching it and let you know how it comes about. The bill itself is only, I believe it's only about two pages long, so it's not really extensive, and it's actually an amendment or a markup to an existing state law. The convention center, if you've driven anywhere near there the last couple of days, there's been an awful lot of activity this week. Some of the additional walls for the event hall have been going up. The pre-function area, the roof is up. They have begun measuring for the curtain walls or the glass that will be installed. Steel has been showing up on site and getting ready to be lifted once all the walls on the event hall are up. Brick is on site, and they're beginning to set the brick on one of the walls that's in the pre-function space as well. We expect that the entire facility will be closed in by late October, and then we'll be able to function internally regardless of what the weather is and finish the work inside. On page 87 of your packet today, you'll see the financial report for the facility year to date or project to date. And then on the following page, on page 88, you will see a summary of the change order reports. You'll note that there is a net change up to change order five, I believe it is, of just a little over $13,000. Those of you that are on the community are aware that most of the time when we do meet, we have deducts as well as additions. So right now, changes are only at a little over $13,000. And I just want to remind everyone, on September 28th, from 9 until 2, Airport Appreciation Day will be celebrated. There'll be a pancake breakfast from 7 to 11, static displays and rides, free plane rides for kids between the age of 14 and 17. So that is on the 28th of September. The actuarial report from Nyhart on the county's pension and healthcare system, post-employment healthcare system, will be delivered in the county commissioner's room on Wednesday of next week, pardon me, Tuesday, I believe it is, the 23rd, I think that's Tuesday, at 10:00 AM, and again, in the county commissioner's chamber. So if you're able to attend, we certainly encourage you to do so. We had, we had an EDA board meeting early last week, and one of the bits of information that they reported through the end of August is, I think, something that's very encouraging. The projects that they've worked on through 2014, through August 31st of 2014, total projected 518 new jobs, 730 retained jobs, and a total investment for that period of time of just over $30 million. There's a lot of small projects that they've had a lot of success with, but when you start adding all those up, they make a very significant impact on the community, so much so that some of our industrial parks are full, our buildings, it's becoming very difficult for anyone who wants to move into an existing building to find one. We did talk a little bit about the St. Clair and M-29 project. Commissioner Bone brought that up. The presentation, I felt, went very well on Monday, and they will be coming back at the next city council meeting in this chamber to spend a little bit more time assisting the community with the planning process on that project. So if you have any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Do I have a motion to receive and file Administrator's report?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go back to item number H, Resolution 14-40 to supersede Resolution 14-23, the purchase of 318 Grand River Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to adopt Resolution 14-40 superseding Resolution 14-23, purchase of property 318 Grand River Avenue.
Support.
Gary, I'm going to turn this over to you, specifically. Uh, Gary, I'm going to turn this over to you, specifically, I'd requested that you come here this evening, and be able to talk through this, so...
The, obviously, well, I opened up my E edition of the Times Herald this morning, and I saw Commissioner Samasco's high school picture.
Picture.
I thought, I gotta read this. Well, you should see the ones I use.
My head hurts, senior photographs.
I get them airbrushed. But anyways, the lead-in line was, just completely wrong. It says, "Five months ago, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners used five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it borrowed, from the library system and the Parks and Recreation System to buy the former art van property." In whichever way this is going to go, there's been so much misinformation, just like that. It's, it's where somebody said something once, it grew legs and then ran off, and, and it's been misstated again and again and again. That, it's a loan, it's an illegal loan, it's an illegal use of the money, millage money by the library, all of which is false. So let's start out with the history of how we got to where we at. Property was, had been on the market for a long time, for about a million dollars. The owner dropped the price dramatically, I think they were just sick of fixing the roof and whatever, and they wanted to be rid of it. Mr. Kaufman talked to me, because there were two other, once the price dropped, there were two other interested parties, I know who both of them were, they were, they were real, it was not some realtor game. And Mr. Kaufman said, "How about if we option it? I'll sign it, subject to board approval, and see, because it's right next to our building, maybe there's some use, one of our departments would have, or more, and if not, we'll let it go. And maybe down the road, we'll wish we hadn't, but we will, because we're not land speculators." And that's basically what this board said as well. So, and it was tied up for a long period of time with renewals, and we just kept it tied up for a long period of time. Did the due diligence, did the environmental, all that stuff. And what came out of it was that there was interest from parks to have the north part of the building, and the library to have the south. And the parks' interest, and I think there's, I believe, I don't know what they do every day, is that they're actually studying the use of this property for an amphitheater-type use, and they're actually spending money right now studying whether that use is viable. The library's concern was, and I talked about this last time I was here, is their building isn't big enough, and it isn't ADA compliant. And to address both of those issues, they need to expand, and they can't go out into the street, so the only way they can go is south into your parking lot. And if they do that, then they would have to replace that parking, and the idea was, because it's still be park, county parking, is do it on this former art van property. So they both had interest. And if not, the clear direction I got was, if we don't have a department interested, we're going to let it go. And it'll just expire, and it'll be gone. So they stepped forward, and in particular, the library, which just got throttled over this issue in the reelection campaign, and I heard about it, and I heard people that attended, and they said, "Once I hear the explanation, it made sense, because the board will tie this property up, will own it, and if the, it turns out, the library can't expand, can't fund it, whatever, then the county will take care of it, and then it's just sold, probably for a lot more money than you paid for it, but it would be just allowed to go, and the same as to parks." Then the, so it was the illegal use of the money, which is, you read the opinion, I mean, it's just outlandish. Then it was, it's an illegal loan. And I had, and that's what this says, loan, from these two entities. And that's just, couldn't be more wrong. Because apparently, what nobody looked to investigate is, this is all county money. There is no separate entity parks that would buy something, and it would be titled in their name, nor is there a separate entity, the library, it's all county money, accounted for in different funds. So if the county decided to buy this, the question was, what fund would be used to buy this property? There was no loan. And I actually, somebody talked to me about that, a friend, and he, and he said, "Okay, well, then, explain this to me." He said, "If it wasn't a loan, is it titled in their name?" And I said, "No." And the reason is, the county library and county parks are a subsidiary board to this board, and they can't hold title to real estate. So in every parcel of property, if anybody cared to do their homework on this, what they would have found out, that every parcel of property that county parks own is titled in St. Clair County. It's all used, bought, the, the fund that's tapped for that is the parks' fund, but it's all titled in the name of the county, and every other parcel of property owned by the county is, that's funded from these various funds, like parks, like the library, like the others, those properties are all titled in the name of the county, even though they may be used by parks, they build a park up on Lakeshore, that's titled in the county's name, and so on. So the reality is, this thing has been riddled with misstatements and misinformation and erroneous opinions from day one. And if you vote for this resolution tonight, the only thing that'll change is, it'll still be titled in the name of the county, is, it'll still be, unless maybe parks, or maybe parks and/or the library's going to say, "No way." I mean, we took the flogging for this thing, and our millage passed easily, and we still want to have the ability to have parking if we expand our building. Because if they don't have the agreement with you anymore, say they rescind, and two, three, four, five years down the road, some other use comes up, there's some economic development project, and you sell it, and then they want to expand, it's too bad, because the, where they would expand went away. So whether they want out or not, is, is obviously up to their boards, out of this agreement that this board entered into with their boards. And the only thing that'll change if you pass this resolution tonight, and assuming one or both of these decide, "Yeah, you know what, we, we changed our mind, we'd like to get out of what we agreed to before," you'll just go to a different silo of money, and that'll pay for it. So, you know, whichever way you go, is what you're going to do, and I understand, because of all this misinformation, of all these outlandish claims, illegal use of money, illegal loans, all of which is factually, legally, accounting-wise, completely wrong. And, but it's created such a controversy over this thing, based upon bad information, bad legal information, bad accounting information, complete misinformation. You may feel compelled to do this, just to end this craziness, but at least I wanted to have my say, because I don't think any of you did anything wrong. Number one, I know you didn't. And it would have been real simple, if you did not have departments who were interested in this property, you are not land speculators, and the, the message that I got was clear, let it go. You did have two departments that were interested, as a result of that, their funding was used, and it was titled in the county, just like every other parcel of property that's owned by the county and used for county purposes. So that's all I have to say, just so at least, if you will, the record is straight, before you vote on this.
Any, Howard?
I, I was just going to say, when the idea of returning the funds to the two departments was just going to be unilateral, we were going to pass a resolution, and the money was going to go back, I, I could not have ever supported that. But going back and giving an option to the two parties, the, the library, and also the park and rec, and let their boards make the decision, because as, as Consul Fletcher pointed out, the library has that parking lot for two hundred thousand dollars.
We made a deal.
We made a deal. And if they need to expand in the future, and there's, they rescind this, and they decide to expand in the future with another board of commissioners, the price may go up tremendously. They've got us on the hook for the next ten years. So I, I, and, and if you've looked at the situation to the library, there's definite a need for modernization and expansion. No, there's no question in this commissioner's mind on that issue. I mean, they have seven hundred people visit that library a day. And, and handicapped accessibility for youth, children, to the second floor is practically nonexistent, unless you're talking about going down the back corridor and riding the elevator up. But that's, that's just unbelievable.
Any other commissioners, any comments? Steve?
I guess what I would say is, this certainly was not anticipated. I know when we purchased this property, we purchased other property, it was along those lines. I never anticipated anyone would put this kind of, not spin, would perceive it in this way, perceive it in a way that would actually, actually damage the reputation or integrity of a department or this board, but it happened. I mean, there was, Gary calls it misinformation, I tend to think that, I want to respect people's opinion. There's a library millage, there's a park millage, we have tremendous public support, our community's blessed. Other communities do not have anything like this, drug task force millages, park millages, things like that. And so we, we have a duty to protect that. And to me, the public perception is part of that. We have a duty to make sure we have good information, make sure there's transparency, make sure we protect the public image, not only of our board, but of our subordinate boards and of the system in general. So this small segment that believed it was improper, these people are respected, intelligent individuals. Jim Brown's here from the paper in Yale, Terry Gilson following this, these are people that I respect their opinions. And so when they tell me, take me to task, you know, Jim said I robbed the, robbed the park, and I shot that or something, and we went around on that. But those are real perceptions, and they're not meant, I don't believe, to malign, but they're, we need to address that. So when I said, I kind of got to the point, a couple weeks ago, I said, "You know, let's just fix it." And it's a very simple, very straightforward process, as our administrators pointed out. It's a stroke of a pen, we're one body, we have two arms and two legs, but we're one body. We have a park and rec, we have a library, we are the county. So from that perspective, that's how I view my worldview, but other people evidently might have saw it a little different. But my point is, this is a, this is a different way to get to the exact same outcome. And when you're dealing with legal matters, a lot of times, the road block is the path to the outcome. And good lawyers like Mr. Fletcher or myself would, would find different ways to get to the same outcome through a different path, and you're successful. And so when I suggested, in my resolution, I, I did look at Mr. Fletcher's resolution, it tracks with mine pretty much point by point, except he does make it an option to rescind rather than a direct, a direct fix. And to me, and I went back and forth with the commissioners, I've emailed people, I've kind of lobbied for a direct fix. Some of the concern that my fellow commissioners had was that it would be rude to our partners to just do something they don't agree with, they partnered with us, they went, asked us to do this, and then we just say, "Hey, we're just going to undo it," without giving them the option. And I respect that, too. But I think ultimately, this board has the duty to manage this issue. And one of the examples I use is, as a prosecutor managing a criminal case, I was in charge of how that trial went, with how the charges were, how the cases went, what witnesses were called, what the plea was, all these different things. You might have a disagreement from a police officer, a witness, or a detective, but ultimately, you had to manage that in the interest of justice, and you could be disagreeing on something, but not be disagreeable. Then it was our duty to do that, my duty to do that. So here, if we, I would still encourage someone to make a second, or make a, an amendment to this, to make this a direct fix, knowing full well that we're not intending to diminish our subordinate boards. But my issue I would have had is, if we just leave it to the subordinate board, it might create another issue for them, you know, more than the same issue. The people that look at our board to say we were heavy-handed, or were bullying these other boards, would still say the same thing, "Oh, of course, they're not going to take it back, because they hold the purse things, they'll be crucified." I mean, to me, the only real way to fix it would be to just get to the same place, the same outcome, with a different process, use our capital improvement fund, restore the monies, with full honor and intention of letting the library have if they need it, or the park if they need it, because it benefits us, it's the county. So I think this resolution gets us where we need to go. If it was moved to amend it to a direct fix, as I suggested, I'd certainly second that. But if it's not, if there's no such motion, I will support at least this resolution, because it gets at least partway to where I think we need to go on this. So that's, that's my position. I really appreciate all the input and back and forth.
I'm going to direct, Gary's got a few more comments that I think you'd like to add.
I have a lot of respect for Commissioner Samasco, but what he suggests, you cannot do. And the reason is, what these other boards, when they voted, and the chair of one of those boards said, in, you know, for example, the term was used, "Restore the money," well, it's, it's all county fund balance, there's no restoring, it's a bookkeeping entry, just like Mr. Kaufman said. There is no restoring anything, it's all county money. So what you're really down to is, you had two departments that said, "Yes, we're interested." The library in particular, the chairman of their board I talked to, and he, this was probably two months ago, he said, "I saw this as the original no-brainer," in the sense that we could commit funds to part of this, to ensure we had a growth plan for the future. We are earning nothing on that money anyways, like two-tenths of one percent, it's earning nothing, and it's all county money anyways. And the, and then if we don't need it, the county will assume funding like that you would be now, and we'll let that go, and we won't have it to you. So he said, what was, boy, this was not hard to figure out. As a result of that, they, they do have the right to enter into contracts. Parks does, Parks has contracts with architects, with engineers, a lot of contracts, with labor unions, and, and so does the library. The library has a lot of contracts. They entered into a contract, and you talk about disrespecting their boards, and to say that, "Well, we're offering you this opportunity," and they both say, "Yeah, we want to do it, and let's all enter into an agreement, so we know what we all agreed to," and we do, and now they have the ability to use that property if it works into their plans, and now what we're going to say is, "You know what, forget what we promised you. We're going to buy fiat, undo that whole thing, and you may not have any way to expand the library, because we might sell this in two or three years, and too bad, because our agreements with you mean nothing." And that, to me, would be ultimately disrespectful to those boards, because they have the right to say, "We made a deal, we tied up this property, now due to this political pressure and this firestorm of misinformation, what we want is, the county board wants out of the deal, because it's become kind of uncomfortable, and it's a tough situation." And so by the stroke of a pen, they do away with the contract and the tie we have to this property. That, to me, I would, I think that's wrong, and it, it wouldn't be legal. One party that has a party, a contract with somebody else, can't unilaterally undo it. So that's my opinion.
Steve?
Yeah, kind of like punching yourself in the face.
Huh?
You're suing yourself. I mean, it's, I mean, I get what you're saying, but I guess I figured that because we are the county, and they are subordinate boards, that they wouldn't have that kind of legal issue.
No, they have, they have the right, they have the right statutorily to enter into contracts. They don't have the right to, to own real estate, but, and they, the, the library has all kinds of contracts. They have contracts for...
I understand that, but as far as, well, I'll, I'll talk to you, but as far as the entities themselves, the county versus the subordinate board, and the privy between those entities being basis for a contract. In other words, the county board can have a binding contract with the library, that's what you're...
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we have an agreement with their board, and their board voted on and approved it, and, and you approved it, and everybody signed it. And, you know, because it becomes uncomfortable for us to say, it's one thing to say, "Okay, you know, maybe this was uncomfortable for everybody, so we offer them the chance to rescind the deal we made," and everybody walks away, it's funded at another level, and then hopefully, if you need it in six years, it'll still be there.
And I'm okay with that, Gary, I just wanted to...
But the, the, I don't think, we, once you make a deal with them and a commitment with those boards, that you can say, "We will, we're going to unilaterally rescind those contracts," even though they were entered into in good faith, and we all voted, and we all signed it, we're just going to basically, by fiat, say it's over.
This is the best we can do.
Yeah, I, I think it's the only way to do it.
What's, any other input, roll call, please?
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyen?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Moving on to, we, did we do miscellaneous business?
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous business, anything to come before us? Seeing on item number fourteen, receiving file.
At this time, the receiving file packets were sent to the commission's package, and the places and any other information presented at this time. Support?
On favor.
Aye.
Those polls adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel Twelve every Wednesday night at nine p.m. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and... You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclercounty.org.